I'm the Vice Chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the Council. We are here this morning to conduct our 18th work session on City Council Bill 1201-52, Transform Baltimore Zoning. During our 17th work session held on Wednesday, November 5th, we worked on Title 11, Industrial Districts Bulk Regulation, Table 11401, and Titles 12, Special Purpose Districts, on Pages 182 to 198. Today, we will continue our review, Title 13, Plan Unit Development, starting on line nine of page 199, and work on as much as we can over the next couple of hours. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the bill by reviewing it page by page, starting with Title 1 and continuing through the bill in the order as written. City agencies and public will be asked to participate by raising their questions or comments as the committee is discussing the page they have a comment or question regarding. The Chairman of the Committee, the Vice President, Vice President Riceinger, is still ill. He's not able to join us. He has been ill now for about a week and a half, for those of you who know, so as I said, please keep the Vice President in your thoughts and prayers. Hopefully, he will be rejoining us shortly. I am joined this morning to my far left by the Dean of the Baltimore City Council from the 5th District, Councilwoman Ricky Spector. And joined to her right by Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my immediate left, the Vice Chair of the Committee from the 14th District, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you. I'm not actually the Vice Chair.
Oh, no, you're not. That I'm so used to saying that from judiciary. She's always sitting right next to me there. Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, a member of the committee. To my immediate right, Ms. Jennifer Coates, Staff to the Committee. To her right, Ms. Kara Kunst, the Director of Legislative Affairs for the President of City Council, Bernard Jack Young. Behind her, Mr. Paul Plymouth from the President's Office. And to Ms. Kunst's right is Mr. John Willis, Counsel to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We are also joined by Ms. Angela Gibson, representing the Mayor of the City of Baltimore. And if you have any electronic devices on you, please put them on silent mode, turn them off. And all of our microphones are live. If you are asking a question to us or making a recommendation to an amendment or whatever, please remember that the microphones not only amplify your voices, they also record what you are saying. And everything that you say during this hearing must be recorded as part of this record. So if you want to ask a question or say something, please make certain that you do have a microphone. So if there's not one at your table, please come to the front. And for my colleagues, please make sure that you have the microphone when you're ready to ask your questions or whatever. Okay. We do have a letter from the President this morning, because the President is always with us and is not able to be here. Dear colleagues, attached to this letter is a proposed list of 39 amendments to Title 13 of City Council Bill 1201-52, Transform Baltimore Zoning. These amendments restore the council's authority and clarify the processes and procedures that planned unit developments will be subject to under Baltimore City's new zoning code. The amendments include restoring the ability to introduce legislation at any point in time, restoring the ability to prove a planned unit development in certain industrial areas, and connect this title to the amendments I introduced in April to Title 5 of this bill that clarify the council's role as the legislative body of Baltimore City. These amendments also strengthen the language regarding minor and major modifications to a planned unit development and clarify when a proposed change must come back to the City Council for approval. I regret that I am unable to attend today's work session. Unfortunately, I have been called away to attend a funeral. On my behalf, Kara Kunst, Director of Legislative Affairs, is in attendance to provide information regarding my proposed amendments. Thank you for your consideration in this important matter. Sincerely, Bernard C. Jack Young, President of the Baltimore City Council. President's letter will be made part of the permanent bill file for this, and as we move forward in the sections, just as we deal with other amendments that are presented to us, we will deal with the President's amendments also. Okay. Before we get started this morning, on page 199, line 1, are there any other questions? Okey-dokey. All right. Page 1, page 199, line 1. Any amendments on page 199? Anybody? Ms. Floyd.
Where are my amendments? There they are.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I have questions and a request for some clarification, and I'm hoping, especially with Mr. Willis here, we can get some. Regarding the transition rules, 13102, Section A and Section C.
Action A and C, can you pull that down a little bit so I can speak right into it?
Section A, lines 19 to 22, and Section C, lines 29 to 31. There is a reference to the initial, requirements of initial approval for a PUD. Then there's a reference to regulations in effect immediately preceding the date of this code. And those are not necessarily, there's a concern that I have, those aren't necessarily the same thing, because you could have what was in effect when the PUD was enacted.
What's the, are you, what is the question?
My question is, can we have some clarity on what is intended there? What is really being, you know, what is really intended, so we don't have ambiguity?
Okay, well, I think the question should go to, that question should go to planning as to what their intention is, since they wrote it.
Well, right, and then it will go to your intention after that, sure.
May I just say something about that listening? Yes, I was.
Sure.
Okay, so we just adopted a PUD in my district that has underlying, and this worried me when it was going on. It has an underlying zoning designation, which will not even exist as a zoning designation when this code is adopted, the new code. There won't be a B even. So what is being pointed out by Ms. Floyd is that the first, A says basically, whatever was in place when the PUD was adopted continues to pertain, and C seems to be saying, whatever's there the day you look at it is what pertains, and that's going to be different. We know it's going to be different. I think that's.
You've anticipated what I was going to say about C, what I was going to ask about C, yes. So between A and C, I'm seeing a lack of clarity, and I'm seeing uncertainty.
Okay, so let's, Ms. Weinberg, Ms. Fine, Ari Weinberg, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So under A, the intention is that any existing planned unit development, as Councilwoman Clark's example, that may be based on any zoning category, you know, whether it's one that continues or one that doesn't continue, is previously approved, stays, all code regulations in effect prior to the effective date of any new code. So it carries with it. Just so that the committee understands, when we were in the drafting phase and working with our consultant team, consideration to transition for planned unit developments is a very tricky item, because they are customized, essentially overlay plans for a particular area. And at the end of the day, we realized, though you want to, in an ideal world, when you adopt a new code, be able to sort of throw away the old code so that you don't have confusion, but this is one area where we could not figure out a workaround. So any existing PUDs would, that were based on the current code when they were adopted, would keep all those references and regulations. So the zoning administrator would be, have to keep around the 71 code for those remaining PUDs that were in effect, because they have cross-references. Further, in the chapter, we did say, you know, ideally, you would sort of phase that out slowly. So if a PUD were removed, that would, you know, eliminate the need. And we suggested that if an existing PUD had a major amendment, so in other words, a PUD went into place under the 71 code, and then had a major amendment under the new code, that the applicant would be required to do a repeal and replace, so that it would get rid of all the old code, so that, you know, slowly work towards a sort of phase out of needing to keep the old book around. But because of the way the 71 code is written, none of our 100-plus PUDs expire. So there was really no logical workaround that we could come up with. So that is the intention of Point A. And I'm not sure I understand the question, the other one was Point C.
Well, Point C says that, it seems to say that whatever you got at a given moment is what is, dominates. That, in other words, once you do make, and these will become IMUs theoretically, once the ones I have in mind, which are business B2, I think, will become IMU. And it basically, underlying, and it says, "All permitted and conditional uses of the underlying zoning district of a previously approved planned unit development," which it is, "are allowed."
Right. Okay, I think I understand your question there. So the, again, the concept here, and obviously, the council can disagree with this approach, was that as we drafted the new code, you know, we were re-examining the areas, recognizing changes, and making zoning classification recommendations based on 2012 situations as opposed to 1971, and some of the new categories. So in, since, in many cases, I'll use a, say a B2, say a property's B2 and has a PUD, and maybe the, you know, it has certain uses of the B2, it excludes other uses, you know, it's some combination. And under the new code, the council were to recommend that that property be C3, let's say.
Let's say IMU.
IMU. Unlikely, only because IMU is really limited to industrial types of buildings in its mapping. It's a little more selective in the mapping. So C3 is a little bit more generic. So the concept in, again, this is thinking in terms of a transition, is that if in the thinking of the council, that they concur that the underlying zoning is C3 in the adoption of a new code, that PUD would automatically, unless expressly prohibited, which is what C says, would automatically gain any uses that C3, that came with C3.
Right. Well, let me follow it from a different direction. So let's say you're, let's use your existing zoning. So your PUD says that you can have the following permitted uses, which are permitted uses in a B2, right? So it lists the B2 that you're going to be allowed, and it lists the B2 that you're going to be prohibited.
Correct.
Okay? Right, and in the PUD. Now, the way that I read this is, says, "All permitted and conditional uses of the underlying zoning district of a previously approved PUD are allowed unless specifically prohibited by the PUD." Now, we have a previously approved PUD. In that previously approved PUD, only certain permitted uses and conditional uses have been allowed in the PUD, because they've been specifically spelled out. And then you have others that have been specifically prohibited in the existing PUD. Now, this says, "All permitted and conditional uses of the underlying zoning district of a previously approved PUD are allowed unless specifically prohibited by the PUD." So the way that I would read that is that even though, when the PUD was initially created, the permitted uses or the allowed uses were limited in the original PUD, what this would do would say, "All permitted uses in that underlying zoning district are now allowed."
No.
Wait a minute, let me finish. Except for those that are prohibited. Because what it says now is transition rules. It says allowed usages. And the wording says, "All permitted and conditional uses of the underlying zoning district of a previously approved PUD are allowed unless specifically prohibited by the PUD." So it's not saying that if prior, if previously, if there was a limitation on what the permitted uses were, that that permitted, that that limitation continues to exist. What this says is, unless they were prohibited, you can have them all.
What type of limitation would you be referring to, other than just prohibited? It's either permitted or prohibited.
No. You can say, you can say the following, like, in B2, right? A tavern is a permitted use, okay? But in the PUD, you may say, "The following use is a prohibited." You may say, "No tavern, you may leave tavern out. It is not a permitted use."
Well, that would carry, that would keep, that's why you have that phrase, specifically prohibited. So if the PUD specifically prohibited taverns, that carries through. I'm not sure what.
No, because it doesn't specifically prohibit it, it leaves it out. There are certain things that say that there are prohibited, and there are others that are left out as saying permitted.
I think I understand your question. Generally.
There is a difference between the two.
Well, generally, the way PUDs are drafted, and there are some old ones that were not drafted this way, is that the wording reflects the underlying zoning. So it starts with the underlying zoning and says, you know, for example, "All uses in B2 are permitted except."
Look at the, look at the proposed PUD for PEMCO that was just given to me. That's not how it's written.
Oh, it should be written that way, and it depends on.
You guys have looked at it.
Well, we got, well, I haven't looked at it, and, I mean, there are a few different ways to craft them, depending on the underlying zoning. But I don't think we philosophically disagree. I think, I think I understand what you're saying. Is that we want the uses, whether permissive or prohibiting, to carry, I think is what you're saying.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that I agree with that. What I'm saying is, if you create a PUD, and you're setting the rules in the PUD, then, you know, I think you may want to set the rules in the PUD. We had a lot of problems with this on the Lighthouse Point site, when we were arguing about the whole thing as to whether they could develop the Icon Building or not, and what the underlying zoning was, and we had a whole, a lot of dispute as to.
That's not a PUD, though.
Huh?
That's not a PUD. That site was not a PUD.
That entire site.
No, it's not.
It's not?
Yes, it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, that one is.
Yes, it is. And we had a big argument as to what controlled there, and I think there was actually, I don't know if there's litigation there.
Well, they also had the confusion of an urban renewal plan that overlaid, and there weren't proper cross-references.
Exactly, but there were.
Not a great example, but I understand what you're getting at. And our intent is that, and you can reword it, but our intent is that everything, both permissive or prohibitive of an existing PUD, carries forward as the council passed it under the current code. And the only thing we are suggesting being added is, if the council sees fit to change the underlying zoning in a way, you know, through this ordinance, in a way that adds uses that weren't there when the PUD was created, and again, B2 to say C3, if the council sees fit to make that map change, then those uses should go along with it.
No, 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 no.
I'm explaining our intent, and obviously, it's up to you.
No, I mean, if you're going to amend the PUD, you amend the PUD, but you don't backdoor it by changing the zoning and then create a whole bunch of stuff that they didn't have before.
This is not intended to be a backdoor, as you know.
But it will.
Every PUD must have underlying zoning, every piece of land. So it's going to have some zone.
No question about that, but you can't give them something.
And if that zone goes from B2 to C3 by the council's choice, because you're going to be looking at maps for everything, then the property, when you make that decision, our suggestion is that carries through consistently, and that is the intention of Point C. If the council does not agree with that, then I suggest you delete C.
Well.
I'm just explaining where it came from.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that, and I'm just speaking for myself, but I find it difficult, the amount of work that goes into a PUD, and I know when it gets, I know it from the community aspect of putting it together in the community, and I know it gets here. I'd have to defer to my colleague, to Councilwoman Spector, as to amount of work that's done at the Planning Commission. But I know the amount of work that's done to get the PUD where it's acceptable to everybody, and then we pass it. And then if we rezone the property, and then all of a sudden, by virtue of it being rezoned, it gets a slew of other uses that were not taken into account whatsoever during the creation of the initial PUD, then I think we create problems for people in the neighborhood, for everybody else, because all of a sudden, you have something coming into play that was never vetted, never discussed. It wasn't vetted by the council, it wasn't vetted by the community, it wasn't vetted, wasn't vetted by the, by the, what do you call it? The Planning Commission, it wasn't vetted by any of them.
This was written based on the assumption that the council would be comfortable with the map that they would be adopting for that area. If you have any concerns about that, then I think you would delete that Section C. But this did come to us from a lot of property owners that have PUDs, that recognize that, you know, some of the underlying categories will change as a result of adopting a new code. So you need to consider those changes and how they transition forward.
Well, I just would like, I'm sorry.
No, it's your turn.
I just would like to express that it's a collaborative effort to begin with, no matter what else it is. But as a councilperson, I would agree that the sensitivity of a PUD is much more a concern of the councilperson to the neighborhood and to the constituency than the professionals. And so I, I mean, that's the way it's worked, well. Sometimes there's an issue of whether it's a substantive amendment or an amendment that is decided by the planning department, or it has to come back to the city council after it is, in fact, an ordinance. But I do agree that there is no clearer, more important point person than the council person for a PUD.
Councilwoman.
Here's the problem, and then my question. There are no comparables. In other words, you have new zoning, recommended new zoning categories that are called different names from most of what we have now. And even if they're called R for R, they mean different things. And that's the other point, that the uses that are described in the proposed code are not, in large part, are not even the same uses that are described in the existing code, the 71 code.
The world has changed.
Well, yeah, the world has changed, and that's the, it's that change that is at the heart of this issue here. And so there are whole new, in other words, it is, it is apples and oranges. Okay? So we have no choice but to choose some underlying new category. I've thought about this a lot for the last couple of months. But some underlying category, theoretically, one that comes closest to what's going on. But it's not going to be a perfect match at all. So it's going to presumably require. And you can't, well, there's two choices. You could somehow lock this in time, what you already have.
Which is essentially A, it's sort of.
Is that what's A saying? Whereas C doesn't seem to say that, but, right. You lock it in time around the, around the underlying, the current, the underlying. In other words.
The current zoning.
Well, you take the B2 and say, "All those uses."
Why don't we just delete the C?
So if we delete C, what are we left with?
If we delete C, we're left with A, which basically says, if they're created, they remain created and they remain valid under the terms under which they were created.
And then, and then, I mean.
We're not going to object if you delete C. I wanted to give the council the background and the thinking. There were a lot of PUD property owners that advocated very hard for C.
I can understand why.
Yeah, because it's confusing. And what it does is, it lets, it, it's confusing enough, we could never figure out what we're doing, which is hard enough anyway. But if we do that, then we have a technical problem, I mean, that we need to think about, okay? Well, just hear me out.
Go ahead.
If we do that, which is the easiest, I mean, the most, less, least disruptive thing to do, we, we need to provide in a readily. to do, we, we need to provide in a readily available place what that means to the world as well as to the developer. In other words, we now have, we know what B two means, kind of. I mean, some of us know better than others. But we know what that carries with it. We have a book, we can look it up, we can talk to each other, we can figure it out. That book will disappear and then there'll be about five years where there's anyone left in city government who even remembers B two. And then there'll be nothing. And yet that's what will prevail. Therefore, it seems to me that we need to incorporate somehow, in some way, a reference, maybe not in this code, but someplace you can get at it so that when it sticks with the underlying zoning, which has now changed...
That would permeate the whole code, not just this section.
Right, I think point A would do that and, you know, because it is based on the existing code.
Okay, we got this.
But maybe your council has...
We're just going round and round now on this, okay?
I'm not going round and round. I'm saying people need access to the information when everyone has retired who might possibly know anything about it in city government.
John?
John? I was thinking as a solution that you could add another phrase to C which said that they would only get those additional uses of the changed zoning classification if it was approved by the city council. In other words, that would in essence be bringing back to you the decision to whether or not the change in the zoning classification would apply to the PUD or not. And you could handle each PUD on a case-by-case basis.
We have no objection to that, but again, our intent in drafting would be to encourage the property owners to, when they were at that point of a change, to consider a repeal and replace or possibly a repeal because in many cases, the PUD would not be needed with the new underlying zoning. So all would be council action. So any one of those is fine.
Okay, here's what we're going to do. We're going to have an amendment to delete it.
Delete C?
Delete C. And then we will, and as we said, when we come back with our amendments, because we're going to come back with all these amendments, we will review the language when we get back. So if we have an amendment to either, or to add something, it will say either delete it or add language requiring council approval. Those are the two suggestions with regard to C. So those are the amendments we're going to look at.
Chair, can I reiterate my question about A? The question is, when you speak about regulations in effect immediately preceding the new code, those regulations aren't necessarily going to be the same as the regulations in effect when a PUD was approved. So I'm asking to see if we haven't, seems like we have an issue there within A.
I'm sorry.
I think what Ms. Floyd is referring to is, let's say, a PUD is written in 1990 based on B two in 1990. And this code is approved in 2015. And between 1990 and 2015, B two was amended in some way that affects this 1990 PUD.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's, I mean, maybe that's a kind of crass example because it's a big spread of years, but that could be the case.
It might not necessarily be 24 years, it could actually be one year, it could actually be a couple of months, because the zoning code gets regulated, gets amended sometimes. So that would be, that's my question, is within A, is there not a confusion or an ambiguity?
I think that would have to be handled under the current code. In other words, how, in whatever manner the current code treats an existing PUD, whether it's a one-year-old PUD or a 20-year-old PUD, for a citywide change would be the way that that would have to be handled.
Yeah.
Because that was what would govern until the effective date. So if there was a citywide change to B two and it was a B two PUD, that interpretation would have to be done under the current code.
Well, but I'm asking about, you know, language that is going to be...
Okay, well, we're not going to debate them. We'll be here all day on this one thing and we're really here to talk about the amendments and what we're going to move forward on the amendments. But we can't, we don't, we're not going to debate, we'll never get off this page. So let's move, concerns have been raised, we're aware of the concerns, okay? Anything else on page 199? Okay, page 200. We have amendments from both Councilwoman Clark and from the President. Let's see, let's start with the, I think Councilwoman Clark's are earlier, so let's start with hers first, okay? Lines 3 to 6.
Lines 3 to 6. I'm deleting lines, I propose to delete lines 3 to 6 and to replace it with the following language under the subtitle two requirements, approval standards, exceptions. Planned unit developments must be introduced and enacted by ordinance of the city council in accordance with the development and public hearing process in which the planning commission and other city agencies report their recommendations to city council as part of that legislative process, period. Once a planned unit development is enacted, any major changes can be enacted only by city council ordinance. I thought that was a nice way to begin that section.
Okay. All right. Anything? Okay, all right. I think the next one is the President's.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Kara Kuntz, on behalf of Council President Young.
Can you pull that closer?
Yes. We have two amendments to page 200. They're on the table labeled Council President Young's Departments of Laws and Planning's amendments. We largely worked on these together, except this first one, which I know planning doesn't agree with us on. The first amendment is to line 11 on page 200, which is to delete from the prohibited zoning districts I one and I two.
Okay.
Yes, can I, oh.
Ms. Feinberg?
Yes, and very much appreciate the work of the President's office in preparing the amendments and both the interlinated and the table that we've received and their hard work with, especially with the Law Department. We concur with, I'll just jump ahead, 99% on the amendments from the President's office, and this is the one that we disagree with. And I would just like to explain why we prohibited planned unit developments in the industrial districts. Our prohibition is based on industrial protection. These are only the heaviest districts, you'll notice here, I one, I two, and MI. Planned unit developments would still be permitted in the mixed districts, but we worked very carefully with the industrial and business community and they came to us loud and clear and said that the planned unit development has been used as a workaround to weaken and threaten our industrial land. And it's very, very important to not allow that to continue to happen.
Right.
So with their input and effort, we included line 11, that they are prohibited in those heavy areas. So with all due respect to, like I said, 99% of the President's office work, we have to go on record and strongly disagree with that one amendment.
I agree with planning. In fact, there's an amendment that South Baltimore Business has that kind of reflects what they've been saying about this, which is coming up on page 201, that basically they add to factors to consider in reviewing PUDs is whether the PUD is compatible with any nearby industrial zones. And that's sort of, I think it's something we need to really discuss with the President and see. They get, in other words, things get awfully cute and industry isn't.
Correct.
The, yeah, I have, actually, I think I'm supportive of the President's amendment and I understand the concerns, but when I look at the corridor, particularly the Haven Street corridor, going from Boston Street north to the Lombard Street rail yards, I understand the importance of the rail lines and wouldn't want to do anything whatsoever to affect the rail lines. At the same time, the buildings that are adjacent to those rail lines that have been industrial use buildings for decades, many of those buildings are vacant and have been vacant for a considerable amount of time. A number of those buildings are really ripe for redevelopment, mixed use, residential in some cases, and would be perfect for PUDs. And, you know, I'm, I would be very reluctant to prohibit PUDs in those areas because I wouldn't want to see those parcels developed piecemeal, because I don't think the development in piecemeal would be to the benefit, developing them piecemeal and selling them off piecemeal would be to the benefit of the, of anyone. So, you know, I wouldn't want to see a blanket prohibition on that. If you look at that, those corridors, you know, we have one particular area that could be developed almost similar to Clipper Mill. And I would be wary of, of doing this. And I know that it, I know that it creates a tension, but, but I wouldn't want a blanket prohibition.
Okay, well, we would respectfully suggest for situations like that, that they be zoned accordingly and that industrial mixed use or the bioscience or the other zones be recognized. But once this council adopts a map that says this is MI or this is I one or this is I two, the recommendation is that the planned unit development should not be the tool that allows speculators or developers to go in and undermine that industrial base. If there's a transition area, if there's a mixed use area, we agree, that should be mapped accordingly, but not as a workaround.
Maybe we need to look at those maps a little more closely. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I do agree that there ought to be some consideration for the zoning itself, to protect the zoning itself. And if you are too liberal with it, you tend to threaten the value of our zoning. So if it is clearly M one or, and it isn't possibly transitional or whatever, then you're protecting that zoning in perpetuity. Well, probably we'll be back in 30 years to do it again. But I do think that if it's identified as M one, it's just I feel the same way about the Mizod.
Right, yeah, right. And, yeah, the, and that's why I said we got to be careful about the two.
Exactly.
Right, okay. All right, so we have, we understand your concern on that and we have the President's concern on that. I think the next amendment, you're on 26, Councilwoman Clark is on line 18. I'll be right back.
Yes, I am. Excuse me. I've added, after line 18, we're still on page 200, it talks about common ownership or unified control. I'm adding a new number three under that, which says, introduction of an amendment to a planned unit development may be filed at the request of any person or entity owning property within the boundaries of the planned unit development. Such is the case. I just want to, I don't think, this is, this is not new.
Well, this has been, again, this section was based on some of the challenges we've had under the 71 code. And we, that's why we did point one there, the site of the planned unit development must be under common ownership or unified control. It doesn't fully solve the problem, but what we, the problem that has occurred, and maybe this can be handled in the expiration of PUDs, is we've had large planned unit developments that one owner owned all the property when the PUD was created. Then he subdivided the property, developed some of it, maybe went bankrupt or disappeared or whatever. The remaining land ended up under a different owner but was still under the PUD rules. And it makes it, in some cases, very challenging to divide the pie, so to speak, because the PUDs created gave authority to a general amount of development. And in some cases, they allowed flexibility as to where the development was. So then you had multiple owners involved.
Charles Village.
Charles Village was the one PUD that's probably an exception in that it was created by multiple owners.
Well, so it's sad. And, I mean, I'm not, I wasn't there.
And, you know, that's a, that's a PUD that, to be honest, could easily be repealed under this new code because everything that it was created for is really now written into the new code, so it kind of, no longer, it needs to exist. But that's, that's one of the many examples. Again, the assumption in a lot of this is that a lot of these planned unit developments, once the work is completed or substantially changed, it needs to be removed.
Well, let me just say...
So that you don't have this outdated thing hanging there.
Chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Inspector?
I just wanted to, before we finish in this arena, I just look always at the Port Covington site in my lifetime. It's a boarded-up box store and another, I call it, I call it the desert. It's a huge open area with a, another box store that did stay alive, but it hasn't been an asset to the city or to the community or anybody. But that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Once something is zoned with a, for a specific use, it should be left to be for that specific use. I don't think we can put the genie back in the bottle with Port Covington, but it would be nice to have that area with deep water for the industry.
We could have bought that back.
Well, I, I agree, the port could have bought it.
Right.
From CSX, anybody could have bought it.
Right.
But the idea, there was an idea that there might be gambling coming to Maryland and a company that did hotels, casinos bought it. And then there was no, at that time, no gambling. But that's, that's, that's the solid ground that we need to stay on, that it isn't up to the whims or the flavor of the, of the month. But I, I don't know how we could, I hope we never make that mistake again. That's why I think that what planning is recommending for definite zoned areas, we should not monkey with it.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know what you're saying. I'm sorry, I, I don't know what you're saying. I'm not being facetious.
I do, I understand. CSX owned Port Covington.
No, no, I understand, no, but I, I'm just adding an amendment that says that, look, I have, I'm not talking about new amendments. I think that if you want to recommend, if the text says that there has to be unified or, or common ownership or something like that, that's fine. That sounds reasonable, but the, I got one in my district, Charles Village, that is far from common ownership. I just want to preserve the right of an owner who lives in that PUD to introduce an amendment. They have the right, I just want it to remain.
We have no objection to that.
Okay. That's all, I'm not, these are, this is a tiny, I'm talking about little people. Okay.
All right. Kara?
On page 200, line 26, we would add back in I-1 and I-2 as needing a five-acre minimum area.
All right. Okay. All right, anybody else on page 200? All right, page 201, I think the President is first on that one.
On page 200, for the approval standards, there's actually a typo, I think, on our sheet. We mean to delete lines 2 through 5, and then insert the language below on our table, which is A, "In reviewing a planned unit development, the conditional use standards of Section 5 405A and 5 406 of this code apply," which goes back to proposed amendments from Title V.
I can't follow her, I don't.
Wait a minute, you're going, you're going much too fast.
I can't, I don't know where you are.
Yeah, you're going much too fast. Okay, you got to slow down.
That's right, either.
Okay?
Okay.
Are you on page 201?
Yes, at the top of 201.
Okay.
Okay.
We would delete lines 2 through 5.
Okay.
We would replace them with a new A, B, and C. A is to say we would, "In reviewing a planned unit development, the conditional use standards of Section 5 405A and 5 406 of this code apply."
I wish you were.
Those are back in Title V, where it talks about legislative authorizations and what standards for approval exist.
What can?
They are the.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I can't, that's me.
They're back on pages 95 through 96.
I'm sorry. I can't, I don't know how to turn this, I don't know how to turn it down. Susan, I can't talk in here. I don't know what to do, I don't know how to turn down that sound. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so 5 405 and 5 406 deal with conditions on conditional uses and approval standards. So what you're saying is the conditional use standards apply here?
Yes.
Okay. So they come into play?
Yes, and that is as we amended Title V back in April.
Oh, Title, oh, right, that's right, they amended.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And what does that mean? What's the gist of that?
Let me flip back.
You have to go back and check those amendments somewhere.
Oh, okay, never mind. I thought maybe you knew. It's okay.
Right.
Figure it out.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Then for B, we would add, "The planned unit development may be approved only if there is a finding that, one, the use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, two, the use furthers the purpose of the proposed classification, and, three, the development of the PUD master plan ensures that there will be no discordance with existing uses."
Okay, all right, that's.
And then we insert C, "The following additional factors must be considered," and those are the existing factors on page 201 of the text from lines 6 through 23. So we leave that untouched, we just add these before that.
Got it. Okay, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I just have added in the South Baltimore Business Association amendment right under what, added on as a number six, under what has to be considered, because I happen to agree with it, and that is whether the PUD is compatible with any nearby industrial zone.
Okay. All right, we have another.
I have another one.
Page 201?
I do.
Okay.
Excuse me one second while I get it. Oh, yeah, it's an easy one. Line 27, an amendment, "In determining whether to grant an exception from district regulations, the city council, I must consider whether the exception will do all those things." I mean, I just wanted to make sure it was clear that it's our, we're the enactor. Anyone can do what they want, but we, I just want to steer this PUD process back into this chamber a bit.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair?
201.
Just a quick comment on Councilwoman Clark. I could be totally wrong here, but I'm reading that as considerations that both of those bodies have to make. So if you delete Planning Commission, then Planning Commission could skip making those considerations, and then when it comes to you, you would be making those considerations. I would think you'd want, it doesn't mean you act jointly, I mean, maybe Laurie can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think you'd probably want everyone to make those considerations, not just you.
The Planning Commission does not have the authority to grant exceptions. It doesn't say that.
No, it's just saying this is what they consider when it comes before them.
No, here's what it says, "In determining whether to grant an exception from district regulations."
And I see what you're saying, I mean, that's imprecise, they don't do any granting.
Well, that's what I don't want them associated with.
Then you might want to fix that part and not get rid of Planning Commission, because then they could consider this same thing with no guidance from you.
They could, you know, you could take us out and say, recommend, I mean, we could change the language, their advisory to this, the Planning Commission is advisory to the city council.
Absolutely, and you probably want them to follow some guidelines.
And they don't grant anything in terms of a PUD. I mean, they do subdivisions all by themselves.
Sure, but you probably want to give them some guidance in their advice to you, and you don't want them to be making these decisions based on, you know, whether it's Thursday.
If they want to, if they want to write up these things, I have nothing against that, but to use the word grant.
Then I would focus your amendment on that word and not cutting them out, otherwise they won't have any standards.
It could simply say, "In reviewing an exception," or something along those lines, rather than granting.
I mean, sure, it could say, "In determining, you know, in reviewing the, when, you know, something like when the Planning Commission reviews and when the city council grants, comma, here's what we use," or something like that.
Okay, can we write, can you write it up so we don't have to? Thanks.
No problem.
That's good, we got it. We've got an amendment to that, Stephanie, can you write that down, because I got to keep.
So we're going to take your amendment, you're not going to proceed with it?
No, it's going to say something to the effect that in deter, when the Planning Commission considers.
Or considers.
Considers its recommendations, and the city council considers granting and exemption from district regulations, here's what you got to consider. In other words, we grant, they recommend. It's separating the two functions. I just object when the Planning Commission is talked about granting something. I mean, they grant things like subdivisions all by themselves, but they don't grant PUDs.
Got it.
Okay, we're, so we're good, I'm good with that if we can, if you can just fix my amendment so I remember.
Okay, Ms. Floyd?
Sir, I saw that Mr. Willis was.
I'm sorry, Mr. Willis, do you have something?
No, I was just trying to address Councilman Clark's concern, and the solution is to separate out the functions and the verbs. So in making recommendations, the Planning Commission will, and in granting, the city council will, you know, that kind of framework or structure, I think, would work.
That's correct. It's a compound subject, well, it's a compound sentence.
Correct.
I just didn't have time to write it out and talk.
A both and.
Yeah.
Okay, we got it. Ms. Floyd?
Briefly, regarding the Councilman, Council President Young's amendment, I have his page in front of me. Toward the top of the page, B, "It may be approved only if there is a finding that," but it doesn't say who makes that finding. I think maybe that would be preferable to say who the find, who's making the finding.
I think that that, is that in reviewing a planned unit development?
It's under the Councilman Young's B toward the top of the.
Council President Young?
Council President Young's B toward the top of the page.
Which page?
This.
It's page three of our interlinated, which is actually continued from the bottom of page two. It's approval standards, and the only people that can approve a planned unit development are the council.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I can't, I can only listen to one person at a time. Miss Conshue, we're talking.
It's at, Ms. Floyd's referring to the top of page three, which continues from the bottom of our interlinated page two. It's approval standards, and the only people that can approve a planned unit development is the council. So we could add to the title perhaps, "Approval Standards for Planned Unit Developments," but.
It wouldn't be necessary, also, state law provides these, so under state law, you're the only people that can approve it anyway, I mean, it's irrelevant and redundant.
Hold on, wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
I have to tell you, I have no clue where you are.
Me neither.
We're just addressing, I think, Ms. Floyd's suggestion.
But where is it in the text of this?
It's not, it's in President Young's amendment.
It's in his amendments.
Is it in the amendment, is it in the interlineation? What piece of paper are we talking about?
It's in the interlinated on page three.
Okay.
And, okay, where is it in the text?
It's in, it's additional new text that goes above the.
Right.
Factors that must be considered, and, you know, it's being put in there because state law requires it. So, I mean, with all due respect to Ms. Floyd, her suggestion is both irrelevant and immaterial because state law mandates this anyway, and the code itself already indicates that only you grant a PUD, so.
It's fine.
If you'd like to put city council as the subject of all your sentences, feel free, but it's already in there.
Well, of course, I would love to, but I don't even know where we are. I see it, I see it, but I don't know where it is.
It was just an observation on my part, that's all. It's not meant to be a big controversy. I want actually to, to then ask whether, when in line, going to the text of the bill on line five, and also on line 27, wouldn't it be preferable to express these as findings that are required rather than as required considerations? And that would just be something I would like the committee to look at for the, for line five and for line 27 and the content there.
Again, I don't, line five and line 27.
Of the bill.
Of the bill.
On period.
Okay, hold on, so we're off of this.
On page 201, yeah, I mean, I, that was just a, just a comment I made, but my real.
All right, so now where are you?
Yeah. On line, on page 201 of the bill, on line five and on line 27, the comment I wanted to make or the question was.
You have a recommendation for amendment, we're not testifying, so what is the?
My question would be, would it not be better to express these as findings that are to be required rather than as just required considerations in each of these cases? That was my.
You're saying the following factors must be required, or the following things must be required rather than considered?
Findings is the.
Findings must be required.
Must, findings must be made, in other words, if these things can be expressed as required findings, why not, why not do that? That's, that was my.
They couldn't. The only required findings are the ones in state law, so anything you add is extra, so that amendment wouldn't be legal.
Is, I'm sorry.
Are you saying you want to make, you want to mandate that they, that they consider these factors? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's already in the text, mandating these as to be required.
They must consider these, right?
That's what, but when you say just considered, it's somewhat ambiguous, and.
What's ambiguous, what does that mean? I mean, you must consider them, you must take them into account.
Right, and that's, we have a lot of that in our current.
What word do you want other than consider?
I think that findings can be required.
Unfortunately, the.
It doesn't take the form of a.
All right.
This suggestion's not legal, so we wouldn't be able to approve this one.
Okay.
The state law tells you what you must find, and then the rest are your considerations, and mandating that the council consider them is the most you can do by state law.
Okay, all right, we got it. Next, anything else on page 201? Page 202, let's see here, who's first on 202, Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah, I'm recommending deletion in its entirety because of vagueness and irrelevance. Page 202, lines 5 to 37. The whole page, basically. It's interesting in dog parks and everything, but I don't get it. I mean, it's, I just don't think we need all that. And this idea about superior design and amenities, I, you know, I don't, I don't agree that, who's going to make the, well, who makes the decision about a superior design? I mean, we all have our viewpoints. I just had a viewpoint the other day that the Planning Commission didn't share, and everybody's got their right, you know what I mean? But who's going to decide that? I would say that I wouldn't want to set myself up to decide superior, superior design, but I wouldn't want the Planning Commission either. I mean, I just don't think it's, I think it's overreaching. Land use is what we're talking about, that's hard enough.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, I tend to agree with Councilwoman Clark, you know, as to what superior design is. I had this great conversation with the people at Harvard Point about the new Exelon building, which I won't use the phrase that I use to describe their building.
That bad, huh?
But, you know, my view of superior design would be something that's being built, you know, not even in this country right now. So I wouldn't be approving anything as an exception, because I wouldn't see anything being a superior design, because everybody's building the same building that's been built a thousand times across this country.
I think.
You know, and what, and who determines what is a substantial benefit to the city?
To give the council a little context in reviewing this, since 1971 code was the first time the council was given the tool of planned unit developments, it was new in that code, and the first. It was new in that code, and the first one was established in 1971, shortly after the passage of the new code. And in that time, in, especially in the last probably 10 years, we've seen a huge mushrooming of the use of planned unit developments as a tool. In other words, they've gotten away from the original concept of a planned unit development and moved into a tool for essentially amending and updating an outdated zoning code for a certain area. The concept is really going back to what the intention of a PUD was to be, and that is, if we really have the proper zoning for most of our neighborhoods, the PUD tool will be much less frequently used than it is today, and it is intended to be more special, something over and above, so that it's not just, you know, the same old thing you can do under the zoning, that it is a creative sharing or use of land. It may be taking a piece of land that has the ability under zoning to develop the whole site, but move, you know, because of an environmental feature, move the development to one half of the site at a higher density and protect the environmental feature. This is just an example.
But you can do that under the code, I mean, under the provisions of, in other words, you can do that now per some of the definitions in this proposed code.
You can't, for one piece of property, you can't transfer the rights without a planned unit development to another piece of property.
Consolidate them.
Pardon me?
If you consolidate them, you can, you can, you can move the density. You can, you can, at least that's how I read what this code divides, but anyway.
Actually, that's not the case without the PUD. So anyway, the context is, the, the PUD, we would expect to be much less frequently used, and the concept would be that it is more special, and it is truly giving something back to the greater community, and that is the concept of substantial benefit. Again, this is the Council's decision here, but I would just encourage you not to base your review of this section on how the PUD language has evolved since '71. I think it came from this perspective. It's evolved into something much different. Of course, ultimately, like you said, people can debate design, but ultimately, everything in the PUD lies with the Council. So it is still your call as to any of these benefits.
I just, I just would like to get rid of it. I think it's just too vague. I mean, basically, people go down to get permits to do things, and in the permit office, they've got good people working there, and if they have to worry about, they're the ultimate authorities for what gets built, and if they have to worry about whether it's a superior designer now, I'm, it's just ridiculous.
No, the determination is made as part of the planned unit development by the Council in terms with the, with the findings of the Planning Commission and others. Once it is approved by the Council, a permit office or anybody else simply reviews it against the drawings that are approved. It's not, you know, what this is, is saying that these are things that should be looked at in establishing a PUD. Once it's signed and sealed by the Council, that tells all city agencies what they can approve.
I stand corrected. I, I do.
These are exceptions from the district regulations, and they're required...
Where are we now?
In News 283. These are, right, these are required for granting an exception.
Yes.
For granting a PUD, which is by definition an exception from the underlying zoning.
So these, these are required findings.
These aren't the findings, these are the public benefit.
I'm sorry?
These are the benefits, the required benefit. So as written, the PUD must give benefit, substantial benefit to the city, and these are examples, and it obviously is ultimately up to the Council to approve the benefit. What the intention here is to give you the tool so that when you are reviewing and potentially approving a PUD, you can say, where's the substantial benefit? You're giving developers...
No, it's gotta go.
...exception in exchange for benefit.
Yeah, I mean, just, just as an example, okay? I mean, I think that the Canton Crossing Shopping Center, right, is clearly a substantial benefit to the city. But in terms of superior design and enhanced amenities, it doesn't look any different than any suburban shopping center. In fact, many suburban shopping centers look better than this does. It clearly isn't anything special in terms of urban design. So under this, I would say that we wouldn't be able to do it.
That wouldn't require a PUD under the new code, so that's not...
It's in a PUD.
It is, again, the context that I gave you, the reason it's in a PUD is because we didn't have the tools under our current code to allow that with the base zoning.
Okay, got it, okay. All right, anybody...
May I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I disagree. I don't understand the, what the difference is in the proposed code from the existing code that has anything to do with, I mean...
I don't agree with her either.
I just don't, I just, okay, I, I mean, you've got some more, I mean, basically, you've taken barber shops and things like that, and you've called them something else, generic.
The substantial difference is the base mapping analysis. In other words, in a 2015 code or whatever, the date is that the Council sees fit to adopt it, it's going to adopt maps that are done currently based on current plans and analyses and modern uses. That is the substantial change that will substant, will reevaluate the need for so many planned unit developments.
Well, but then you've got overlays on top of houses that let them be commercial instead of zoning them correctly. You've got neighborhood commercial instead of zoning them correctly. You've got all these overlays to fix that underlying great map. I mean, I think you guys have done a remarkable job at just doing this thing, but let's not call it more than it is. It's, it's a, it's a land use guide, and the maps are reflecting current uses. It's not Valhalla. It's good work, very good work, but it's not, it's not substantially different from what we've got now. It's just updated and generic, more generic.
But the, the other thing is that even if it becomes the exception rather than the rule, which is really what you're driving, right? You're driving towards...
A PUD becomes the exception rather than the rule, yes.
Right. PUD becomes the exception, these still, these descriptions still don't improve under the fact that they're an exception. Trying to determine what a demonstration of superior design is or, you know, demonstrating the substantial benefit, they're still, you know, you still have the same problems with them whether they're being applied on a basis once a year, twice a year, or once every three years in terms of the application of them, the exception application.
It's not, the application would be in the review of the PUD, and that would stand until that PUD is complete. I'm not sure what you're getting at.
Never mind.
Who can judge?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ryan Dorsey.
I'm sorry?
My name's Ryan Dorsey.
Just, yeah, pull it up so we can hear you. Go.
I guess, referring to the language in line six about demonstrating superior design, I guess I'd just like to say that I don't think that we ought to be very quick to omit that as a requirement. And I would pose the question, don't we think there's a possibility that we might be able to judge for superior design quality that we, to a standard that we should be holding the city to? That's...
Okay.
I just posed that question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have the recommendations. All right. Anything else on page 202? Page 203?
Uh, yes.
Page 203. Um, hold on one second here. Page 203, um, lines two to 11, uh, lines one to 10. Okay, so we'll start with Councilwoman Clark, and then we'll go to Ms. Consh, for the President. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee, I, I am recommending to delete lines, well, what have I said? Yeah, lines two to 11 on page 203. Basically, they lay out a plan of review for the Planning Commission or staff that I, I think is tedious. I mean, it's, it's endless, and I don't agree with it, and so I've deleted the outline of the steps that one has to go through before one, oh, well, the first three are steps to go through on lines five, six, and seven. They would be steps to go through, and then the fourth one would be after the, I think after the Council takes action. As I read it, I'm not sure, but I think it's, first of all, it's a lot of steps to go through before you get to the City Council, before you're allowed to get to the City Council. And then there's, I, I don't know why we would have this all codified or, I, I think you need, I think it's good to have the pre-application consultation that they, they have now, and I've left that alone, actually. So I guess maybe I'm just asking, in the long run, to amend this first few lines if they, if, if they want to list, I would say, pre-application consultation.
Okay, all right. Okay, President's Amendment.
Throughout this title, the Council President suggests renaming one of those four components that Councilwoman Clark was just talking about. So on page 203, on line seven, we would like to rename preliminary development plan to PUD master plan. A preliminary development plan sounds like it's something preliminary that's not going to get approval, but as you read through this title, the preliminary plan is what comes to the Council and gets approval. So what it should really be called is a planned unit development master plan because it's what the City Council will be approving as part of a PUD ordinance. So we start that here on line seven of page 203, and then we do this throughout this title.
I, I don't want this to be more than it needs to be because I don't know what the other amendments are, and I know I'd like to sit with you. I didn't know the President had amendments, and I'd like to get them together. But here's my, here's my overall problem. This is one process that happens now. It's helpful to an applicant, it's helpful to the planning people because they're gonna have to bring it to the Planning Commission eventually, but these other things have to all happen, and they all have their own timelines and their own feedbacks and their own approvals before anything comes to the City Council. Now, the way things work is usually, people will go talk with planning, and meanwhile, they'll talk with the Council and all and say, I want a PUD, and then the planning people, they know about it. The councilperson waits for things to kind of get ready, kind of review it, and introduce it. But we don't need to wait for the concept, plan, and the, I, I guess... Oh, okay, get rid of that. Okay, so we, we don't, we don't need to wait at all legally for anything, except it makes sense to, and if they wanna put it in the code, who cares? But all this other stuff is like, really? It's not gonna happen.
I think that we largely agree, and our next amendment somewhat addresses that.
Okay.
Okay, so you wanna go to the next amendment, which is on the top of page two of your amendments?
Yes, so moving on to page two of the Council President's amendments. On page 203, after line 11, we would like to add a section C.
Just flip it over.
And this C would be called the introduction of legislation. And the introduction of legislation would read that one or more members of the City Council may introduce a bill at any time to provide for a planned unit development. Upon referral of the bill to the Planning Commission, the property owner or developer seeking to establish a planned unit development is considered the applicant for the purposes of this title. And then the provisions regarding applicants in this subtitle three apply in their entirety. So this restores that even though A has this four-step process, the City Council can introduce a bill at any point in time, the applicant's welcome to go over to Plan and Commission first, but that doesn't in any way say that the City Council can't, if they're ready to introduce a bill, introduce a bill and then send it over to the Plan and Commission for all these other steps.
So that, I mean, so I presume that as you go through, you unhook the provisions that lead from one to another to another to another?
Yes, we clarify in succeeding sessions, sections, that these things all happen, but they're not necessarily prior to the City Council introducing a bill.
What, what, no, no, no.
No.
Why, why do you want develop, I mean, why do you want developers to go through all this? Have you read the timeline? Have you added up the months that are involved before? We can introduce a bill, but a developer's gonna read all the rules and see all the timelines and if they're in the code. So they're very tedious, and they do connect back to our ability to act if, if, because you could be su, in other words, they create steps you would have to go through as a developer, the heck with what we think, if they're in the code, then he or she, the developer, is going to have to follow them to, just to be legal. And it's gonna be months and months before that developer is ready to take action. Now, I, I just think it's ludicrous, and I, I don't care what the plan, you know, what planning wants to do is fine, just as long as it is not codified, except as required... long as it is not codified, except as required for the, to get it done.
All right, well, we have, we have the amendments. Keep going.
Okay.
We're still on page 203. I think there's one more. You have one more.
We have a couple more.
Two more, I'm sorry.
On page 203, lines 14 to 15. At the beginning of line 14, we would insert the phrase, "Except for an applicant for whom a bill has been introduced pursuant to Section 13301." And then at the end of line 14, we add a sentence. I'm sorry, at the end of line 15, we insert a sentence. "For an applicant for whom a bill has been introduced, the consultation required by this section must occur as soon as possible after the bill's introduction."
Okay. All right, your next one?
On page 203, on line 27. We delete the words "pre-application consultation," and we replace them with the purposes of the consultation required by this section. So instead of saying the purpose of the pre-application consultation, it becomes the purposes of the consultation.
Okay. All right. Now, you have 203, line 13 there?
It's supposed to be 204. That's a typo.
Is that a duplicate?
No, that is throughout where we delete the words "pre-application," because you can introduce a bill, so it's no longer "pre-application."
Is that 203, line 17? You have 203, line 13. After 203, line 27, on page two of seven, are the President's Amendments?
Yes, I have a numbering issue.
203, line 13, delete "pre-application," but the... It's not "pre-application," is that?
It is on line, that's page 204.
I understand, and I just said, is that a duplicate, or are they both writ, is it written twice there?
It's just, oh, it's one. I see.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I do.
So it's on 204?
So...
Yes, I wrote it twice.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted.
One with the incorrect.
That's all I wanted to check. Okay, on pa, anybody else on page 203? Page 204?
Yeah, I'm there.
204, um, let's see here. Okay. No, you don't have anything on 204.
Um, I do.
I'm looking at your thing right now.
Well, then, I must be...
I don't see it. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, it's the first one. I did see it. I'm apologizing. There it is. Okay.
It's totally okay.
Okay, go ahead. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I have an amendment on, a proposed amendment on page 204, lines one, excuse me.
11.
Oh, I've got it. It starts over on 203. 12 to 33. Oh, I'm leaving that alone, right. So, okay, here I, oh, you're right. You're right, and I'm wrong.
Carries over, 204 and 205.
Yeah, but I'm leaving, I'm leaving that alone.
Right, yeah.
And 204, right. So it's not until I get to line 11 on 204. Okay, sorry.
All right, so the only amendment of the President on page 204 is on line 13. Okay, so we have that amendment, and that's just as the President, that's deleting the words "pre-application," okay? Councilwoman Clark on page 204.
Yeah. Page 204, lines 11 to 36, which is "concept plan," all the way down to the end of "concept plan" on page 205, lines one to 20, delete.
Okay.
I mean, really?
Okay, well, then it continues on to the next page.
It does. As long as you don't mind my going...
Keep going.
205, line 21 to 36, page 206, line one to 37, and page 207, line 125, delete. And then finally, page 207, lines 29 to 40, page 208, lines one to 37, and 209, lines one to 29, delete.
So basically, what you're saying is delete Section 14303, 14304, and 1430, I mean, I'm sorry, 13303, 304, and 305?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I know that sounds drastic, but really...
May I ask a question?
Well, wait a minute, let's just, let...
But I really, I mean, I've struggled with this since the first time I ever read it way back months ago. It's just, it's just too much, and it's not necessary, and it's surely not necessary to be codified if they want to go through all this. But, really? Well, I'd like to see some development occur within, you know, our lifetimes.
Okay, Ms. Feinberg?
Based on those amendments Councilwoman Clark asked for, that would eliminate all the requirements or description of the PUD? So is there a suggestion as to replacement of that? This is fairly normal language, that a PUD requires things like site plans and topography and, and that sort of thing. And if I'm understanding that correctly, all of those requirements are suggested to be eliminated with no replacement. So what would a PUD be made up of?
I mean, I'm happy if to go back and put in requirements for codification. It's the processes that are endless in their description and in their timelines that I find, that I'm concerned about. And I don't know which of these things need to be in a code and which can just be in rules and regulations that get handed out. I read them. I'm not an expert, but I, I didn't just sit down and delete them without thinking about it, reading it, and I think it's just too much. Too much.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, so...
May I add one thing, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry. I also, in your packet, I think, I hope, no, I didn't. Don't I have, don't I have these figures in here? Yeah, Stephanie? I also...
Same thing.
Oh, yeah, here it is.
It's Amendment eight.
So if I may just say so, these are, the tape are the, I'm sorry, the, what do they call them? The charts or whatever that are back in the back, that if we do adopt these amendments, need to be amended as well or deleted.
Right, and we note them, and we'll get to them when we get back there.
I just wanted to say it first.
Okay.
My suggestion on the figures would be to wait till you've done the text, because the figures are just illustrative, so then make them match what you...
Yeah, I just didn't want us to forget. Thanks.
Okay, anything else on page 204? Page 205, President's Amendments, line 20?
At the end of line 20 on page 205, after where it says, "In accordance with the Planning Commission's rules and regulations," we would add, "and the Maryland Open Meetings Act."
Okay. Go ahead.
On page 21, I mean, sorry, page 205, line 21. "We propose renaming the Preliminary Development Plan to the PUD Master Plan."
Okay.
And then delete lines 23 through 25.
All right.
And replace those lines with language that reads, "The purpose of the PUD Master Plan is to serve as the legislatively approved plan encompassing all major aspects of site development and public benefits. Where certain elements of site design are unknown, it is sufficient to reflect intent as provided in this section." So we essentially would like to take out this Preliminary Development Plan and call it the PUD Master Plan and clarify that it's the thing that the council will legislatively approve of.
It must be on the other side of this upside down. Yep.
Okay, go ahead. Line 27.
This is another deletion of the words "Preliminary Development Plan" and replacing with the phrase "the PUD Master Plan."
Line 36.
"We would like to delete this line 36, number five, and replace it with the General Plan for Landscaping that demonstrates design intent and how environmental requirements are to be met."
Okay. Anybody else on page 205? Page 206. Page 206, line seven, President's Amendments.
"After the word 'the,' we want to insert the word 'general,' as in the general location of existing and proposed water and sewer facilities."
Line 21 to 27.
This is three deletions on line 21, 24, and 26 of the phrase "the Preliminary Development Plan," to replace it with this new language, "PUD Master Plan."
Lines 33 to 37.
"We would like to delete all of lines 33 through 37 and replace it with a new paragraph that explains what the Planning Commission can do at the conclusion of their public hearing." And this is that the Planning Commission may recommend approval, approval with conditions, or advise the applicant in writing of any recommended changes, additions, or corrections to the proposed PUD Master Plan. "If the Planning Commission recommends changes, additions, or corrections, the applicant may, within 30 days of the recommendation, submit a revised proposed PUD Master Plan for Planning Commission consideration without paying an additional filing fee. The Planning Commission may grant the applicant additional time to prepare the revised plan, and once re-submitted, the Planning Commission may then recommend approval, approval with conditions, or denial of the proposed Mass, PUD Master Plan." So this is before the Planning Commission sends their final recommendation over to the council. This is telling them what they can do at the end of their hearing.
All right, anything else on page 206? Page 207, one to eight?
"We would like to delete lines one through eight and say, instead of that, once the Planning Commission makes its final determination regarding the proposed PUD Master Plan, the written recommendations of the Planning Commission must be submitted to the City Council."
Okay, line nine?
"Delete the words 'plan approval procedure.'"
Okay.
And insert "approval of," sorry, forgot the insertion.
Okay, lines 10 and 11?
"Delete the words 'Preliminary Development Plan' may be introduced to the City Council." And insert "instead." "After the City Council receives the Planning Commission's recommendations, one or more members of the City Council may sponsor a bill to create the planned unit development if a bill has not already been introduced for the same purpose pursuant to Section 13301."
Okay, go ahead. Councilwoman Clark?
So basically, we don't have the power at any time to introduce a PUD bill.
Actually, I think these changes expressly state that you do have that power at any time, and you would have that power even if it weren't written down. You have that power, and this clarifies that, I think.
Okay, I mean, it was, I thought it was one of the, maybe, I mean, I dreamed it, but I, I take, all right, I'm, I'm not going to debate this amendment. It's just that it plays into the presumption that we are waiting for permission from an agency to do our job.
This says that if a bill has not already been introduced, but if there's better language, I think that we are open to better language.
We shouldn't be talking about it like that.
Yeah. Okay. Lines 12 to 28?
Delete them.
Okay. Line 30?
"Before A, insert a new A section." "The purpose of the final development plan is to provide additional detailed information on all aspects of site development and public benefits once construction is imminent. Whereas the PUD Master Plan may reflect design intent, the final development plan must reflect actual and final proposed conditions. The Planning Commission may not approve the final development plan as provided in this section unless the final development plan substantially complies with the PUD Master Plan." So the, this whole section, this 13305, is new to our zoning code, but it's something that the Planning Commission does today. So if it's going to be here, we wanted to add language that says, whatever Planning Commission approves as their final development plan must match what the City Council passed."
All right. 31, 34, 36, 38?
This is deleting Preliminary Development Plan and replacing with PUD Master Plan.
Anything else on page 207? Page 208? One to 16?
This may be easier to look at on the interlineated version. It's page 11 of the interlineated for the plan components, because we would like to delete lines one through 16 and replace them with new language.
Okay, we got them. You don't have to read it all.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right.
Where are we on interlineated now?
Page 11.
Okay, so what are you saying? Let's take this out and put this in.
Could you just summarize the effect of these words? I'm sorry, I'm...
So we felt that this section was a little unclear about what the final development plan would encompass, so we replaced it with just three points that say the plan. It essentially says the final plan, whatever Planning Commission approves, has to match what the planning, what the City Council has approved. And that it can't be anything outside of what is required in Section 13304B, which is the list of what the master, the PUD Master Plan has to include.
Thank you.
33, 34, 36, going to the top of the next page, 413, 1421?
Yes, this is deleting Preliminary Development Plan and replacing it with PUD Master Plan.
Okay. All right, anything else on 208? 208, okay. 209, 40 to 42.
This is under the Engineering Corrections.
Oh, wait a minute, hold it. Wait a minute.
I think Mary Pat's amendments are before mine.
We're now in subtitle four. Give me one second.
From page 209, correct?
From page 209 into subtitle four. Okay. Okay, so let's see, you are in line 40, 40. Okay, Councilwoman Clark is in line 34. Okay, Councilwoman Clark?
I have an, this is the...
Amendment number nine of yours.
Yeah. Oh. Oh, I was going to do Amendment, Amendment eight. Oh, did I really? Because...
Those are the figures.
Okay, I've also got, I'm deleting under Engineering Corrections. I'll go to Amendment nine. That's okay.
I'm using as a different...
Oh, Lord, no. Really? When, when did you get it?
I thought I was sitting here on my best just now.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, I, well, I probably need it, because I've got, and somehow my numbers are different on my own amendments. Can I get what you've got, just what you've got today? Can I get what you've got, just what you've got today? So I can, I don't do this again? Okay, just let me reorient. Okay, so... I'm sorry, I don't know what, I apologize. Let me keep going, I know what I'm doing. I know what I'm doing.
Oh, it's twice. No, that's okay, it's twice, it's here. And then it's here again. I just, it's in two places.
Okay, sorry. Sometimes on a Sunday afternoon, I get tired.
That's okay, it's in two places.
All right. I am, what page would you like me to be on by now? Nine or 10?
Whichever one.
209, I would delete engineering corrections.
Okay.
I don't think it belongs in the code.
Okay, so lines 34 to 42.
Forty-two and 210, I have to skip over and...
And lines one to 10. Okay, all right.
It's like, really?
Okay.
And then I don't kick in again till line 12.
Okay, all right. Back to the council president on page 209.
Okay, we propose amending the engineering correction section. At line 40, after the words, "may not approve any change that violates." We want to replace lines 41 and 42 with five items that it cannot violate, which are the underlying zoning, any approved exception, any condition attached to the approved planning and development, any provision of the approved bill, or five, a change that fails to substantially comply with the PUD master plan or city regulations.
Okay, line 42.
After line 42, we'd like to add a proposed number three to say that the director of planning may not approve any engineering corrections for a site that has not had building permits issued.
Okay. Continue over to your amendments at page 210, lines two.
So these are little word changes in lines two through four. We delete the word "these" on line three. We delete the words "the ordinance" and insert the word, and then insert the word "the," so it will now read, "a revised final development plan must be submitted to the director of planning with changes indicated by a marked up or redlined exhibit of the plans showing all changes to the final development plan." And this is to clarify that an engineering change cannot change the ordinance or the planned unit development master plan as was passed by the council.
Okay. All right, five and six.
After the words "development plan," we insert the words "established under this section." So the revised final development plan established under this section must be reviewed and approved or denied by the director of planning within 15 days.
Seven to 10.
We insert a new number three that says, "a new final development plan reflecting these changes. The changes made pursuant to this section must be filed with the Department of Planning, noting the date of the changes."
All right, let's just continue with the President's Amendments on page 210, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Clark's on 210.
Okay.
16 to 19.
So similar to the engineering changes, we change the section two of minor changes so that after the words, "the planning commission may not approve any change that violates." It becomes, one, violates the underlying zoning; two, any approved exception; three, or any condition attached to the approved planning and development with the exception of modifications to a planned unit development's phasing schedule; four, a provision of the approved bill; or five, a change that fails to substantially comply with the PUD master plan or city regulations.
All right, and 21 to 24.
This is the same language changes that we did to the previous section. So it's little word changes so that the new section reads...
Okay, 27 to 30.
This is a new section, it's the same new section three from engineering about a new final development plan. Reflecting these changes must be filed with the Department of Planning, noting the date of any changes.
35 to 36.
So this is where there's a new expanded major changes section to clarify what a major change is. So on lines 35 to 36, for a change in the building height, we clarify that a change in the building height is a 10% increase or a 25% decrease.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark.
Oh.
Amendment nine. I think lines 11, 12 to 27.
I don't know what piece of paper I was holding before. Page 210, lines 12 to 26. These are under minor changes. I've deleted the preceding section. Minor changes. On page, on line 12, I would delete commission and add in zoning administrator. Basically, we've been through all this discussion and I'm highly recommending that an uninterested party decide what is minor and what is major. And so zoning administrator may approve. And then on line 13, the, not planning commission, but the zoning administrator may approve a change to the approved final development plan that is not a major change governed by yada, yada, yada. Next paragraph. In addition, the zoning administrator... Now, let me make sure I'm reading the right lines to you. May, all right, excuse me. Line 12, okay. What, what I'm substituting is, planning, the zoning administrator may approve a change to the approved final development plan that, A, is limited to design features and interior planning; B, does not include any increases or decreases to approve density or bulk requirements or to approve use categories within the existing PUD; and is not a major change governed by 13-403 of this subtitle. And then, under, after that, in addition, the zoning administrator may not approve any change that violates the underlying zoning, any approved exception, et cetera. In other words, substituting zoning administrator as the deciding party. And three, the zoning administrator may determine what constitute a minor modification for purposes of this subsection and upon appeal of his decision, must refer the issue for a hearing which stays the decision to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals. So that's what I would like to see done of a substantial nature besides just taking things out.
Lines 20 to 30, amendment 10.
Delete.
Okay. The bottom of page 210, lines 31 to 36, carrying over to one to 14 on 211.
Oh, yeah. Under, I, I would, where am I seeing, oh, I, I go over, I flip. Actually, I go over to 11 on this one. Yeah, I'm not, and we're not there yet.
No, you can go, you can carry it over, go ahead.
Page 211 at the top. Line one. Two deletions in line one and two, which change the sentence to say, A, change in the type, location, or arrangement of land use within the development, period. And then... Yeah, and I just, 11, I just delete in its entirety. Oh, yeah, I already did that. I already did that, so I think I'm... Thank you.
All right, page 211, oh, you got some, page 210?
On 210, please, yes, Mr. Chair, yeah. I have a question, the same question is for two different sections. The first section is lines eight through 10, and this, and then the other place it appears is lines 28 through 30. The question is, how does an action by a body other than the city council end up being recorded as an amendment to an ordinance? That's my question. On those, both of those areas, both of those sections, eight through 10, lines eight through 10 and lines 28 through 30, the proposal is to have an action...
Page two, slow down a minute. Page 210, lines eight to 10 and lines 28 to 30.
Yes, sir.
Okay? All right? Okay.
I just deleted it, along with everything else.
The amendments, the amendments are to delete them, the President's Amendments are different. Okay? The...
This is a horrible section, but you already know that.
I've said what I needed to say.
Okay.
Where's the other place it is?
It was, it was eight to 10 and 28 to 30.
Yeah, I deleted that. The whole thing.
Okay.
I mean, basically, this is fraught with problems.
Both sets of amendments, as I can tell, delete that entirely, and we wouldn't support it as legal anyway, so...
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Okay, page 211. President's Amendments, 211, line one.
This deletes, it's the same as Councilwoman Clark's, we delete the word "significant." We don't delete the end of the sentence as she does, but we wanted to take out the word "significant" as an ambiguous, ambiguous change.
Okay. The... Six to nine.
So after the words, "any change," actually, we essentially delete and rewrite lines six through nine. We change it to six, "any change that violates, one, the underlying zoning; two, any approved exception; three, or any conditional, or any condition of approval attached to the approved planned unit development with the exception of modifications to a planned unit development's phasing schedule; a provision of the approved bill; or five, a change that fails to substantially comply with the PUD master plan or city regulations."
Okay. All right. Switching over to Councilwoman Clark.
Oh, yeah.
Lines 10 to 14, amendment 13.
Yes, sir. Okay, so I'm changing the, I'm proposing to change the name of the title of B to "change requirements." And then I would delete language so the final amendment with deletions and additions would read, "B, change requirements. A major change..." Doodly-doo, "must," there is a must here, I know it, "be introduced and enacted by city council ordinance. The approved planned unit development is in effect throughout the proposed amendment process." I know there's a must. I really, there is. Oh, there it is.
Okay. The, let's see here. We've got the President at line 18.
On line 18, we delete the words owner and developer and replace it with the word applicant. And then delete the words that they will. So just the applicant.
We got Councilwoman Clark back on amendment 14.
Okay, we're under enforcement now.
Yeah.
Okay. Amendment 14. Page 211. I would change it, excuse me, I just, I'm adjusting myself. Under B, B, line 27, "extension of time." It would read, the planning, excuse me, it would read, "extension of time." "The zoning administrator may extend the time for expiration of an approved planned unit development and final development plan on, one, a written request for extension from the developer that is submitted before expiration and for good cause shown, and," this, this is added, "two, Roman numer two, only after the applicant has mailed notice to properties immediately adjacent to the PUD and advertised the extension appeal in papers and media of general circulation, and no more than nine protests have been received within 15 days of notice from residents and property owners in the same election district as the planned unit development. Three, upon the protest of 10 or more eligible persons, the zoning administrator will either, A, withdraw approval of the extension or refer the appeal for public hearing to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals."
Okay. Amendment number 15, lines 33 and 34.
Okay. This is simply, I'm deleting the whole line. I'm deleting line 33 and 34. It says, "the planning commission must conduct a public hearing to determine whether to terminate or extend the approval." Gone.
Okay, and amendment number 16, line 35.
"In making its determination, the zoning administrator must take into account," colon.
Anything else on page 211? Okay, page 212, line 12, President's Amendments.
We delete the words owner and developer and replace them with the word applicant.
I'm sorry?
We delete the words owner and developer from line 12
Okay.
and replace them with the word applicant.
All right. And amendment number 17, Councilwoman Clark.
Okay. Noncompliance, cause for canceling development plan. Under action by administrator on line 15. Under that, which is C, action by administrator, line 15, page 212. It already says, "the administrator may order cancellation of the planned unit development and final development plan, and, I would add, two, terminate use and occupancy permits. Three, take any other action that is appropriate." So, U and Os get added to the mix of sanctions.
Anybody else on page 212? Our next work session on City Council Bill 120152, Transform Baltimore Zoning, is Monday, November 18th at 5:00 p.m. At that work session, we will, we will begin where we ended this morning. But...
17.
Oh, there's a typographical error. I'm just reading the script, folks.
I'm sorry.
Well, Monday, November 17th at 5... No, that's a council meeting. It is, the date is right, the day is wrong. On, one more time.
Tuesday.
Hey, I'm reading what I was handed.
I unfortunately typed my own stuff, so I can't blame anybody.
Our next work session, one more time. Our next work session on City Council Bill 120152, Transform Baltimore Zoning, is Tuesday, November 18th at 5:00 p.m. At that work session, we will begin where we ended this afternoon on page 213, line one, in Title 14. Thank you all for attending today's Land Use and Transportation Committee work session. Please check the area around your seat to make certain that you have everything that you brought with you. We will be closing the room shortly and ask that everyone exit promptly. Committee stands in recess on Council Bill 120152. Thank you all very much.